Okay, I call a meeting of the North Syracuse Board of Education in order. Please rise for the pledge. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Mr. Harrington will be excused today. He's a little bit under the weather. Start with a moment of silence for the following. John Calabria, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to begin with a proclamation that's going to cover several groups, so I'm going to read this carefully so I make sure I do it justice. Just excuse me because I'm fogging up a little bit here. Don't fog up on Zoom for some reason, so. Here we go. Throughout history, teachers, school nurses, teaching assistants, transportation personnel, and teacher aides have had an impact on the district's students and community. They work for the well-being, welfare, and future of our children. This awesome responsibility is accepted with commitment, dedication, and even love. Because of the complexity and diversity of their role, they must be flexible, resourceful, positive, and patient. The teachers, school nurses, teaching assistants, transportation personnel, and teacher aides of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber. They've dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive a quality education. To honor the teachers, school nurses, teaching assistants, transportation personnel, and teacher aides of the North Syracuse Central School District and their accomplishments and efforts on behalf of our community's most valuable resource, our children, I, Paul Farfali, a president of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare the following, and I'll go through each one with their date. May 4th, 2021, Teacher Appreciation Day. May 5th, 2021, School Nurse Appreciation Day. May 6th, 2021, Transportation Personnel Appreciation Day. May 11th, 2021, Teaching Assistant Appreciation Day, and May 18th, 2021, Teaching Teacher Aid Appreciation Day. They are to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. So with that, I would entertain a motion, motion from Mr. Crabtree, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Post. That's carried. Thank you. Okay, next we have our OCMBOSIS presentation for the budget vote that we have later on in the agenda, so. I think you have, if you have something forward here, it's all yours when you're ready.
The superintendent for OCMBOSIS since November, and Colleen, and he's superintendent, and Colleen Vigiano is the deputy superintendent. She's been with BOSIS, I think, about fifteen or sixteen years.
Great.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks very much, and thanks for having us tonight. So we're happy to be here tonight, especially the night where the districts are voting on the BOSIS budget, so. That's, I don't know if it's timely, but we're sneaking it in under the, under the wire, be able to talk a little bit about the BOSIS budget. So we're going to do that, and then we're going to show you a video that sort of highlights some of our programming that we used at our annual meeting a couple of weeks ago. And then we're happy to take any questions either at the end or the way that the two of us tend to work is we're happy to take questions at any point as we, as we move through this, so. Looking forward to being able to speak with you tonight. So I'm not going to read this slide to you, but I will say that when we began the process of sort of thinking about this last year, right, that all of us have struggled through and tried to figure out how do we help support each other? And then ultimately, when we're thinking about how we're supporting each other, how do we help support each other and each other's students? And it, it just really came in handy that we had the executive director of NISCUS and the executive director of NISBA write an op-ed talking about what BOSIS does throughout New York State, and so I sort of, you know, captured some of those quotes and really think that what we have tried to do at OCMBOSIS is, is capture some of that spirit and that cooperation and that help for how we all work together to help our students. So when you think about who we are and who we are as a BOSIS, we have twenty-three component districts, obviously, of which North Syracuse is one. There are three BOSIS, additional BOSIS that make up our joint maintenance team, the JMT, that we work closely with. We help service over a hundred non-component school districts. Then we also partner with higher education, business, government at the local, state, and federal level, all variety of different local agencies, you know, probably best encapsulated by the recent additions to mental health services that are, that are coming from the county. And then obviously, State Education Department is a, is a major partner. So our, our region covers a wide geography. We are at the north end of it right now, obviously. We have about thirteen hundred employees who work for us at OCMBOSIS. And in one way or another, we touch the lives of about fifty-three thousand kids, K-12. Now, why are you voting on the BOSIS budget tonight? It's because of a bit of an arcane education law that says, the education law nineteen fifty, component districts are required to vote on only the administrative portion of the BOSIS budget. And so we will be going through that now. What I would, what I would say to you is that resident weighted average daily attendance, ARWADA, is one of those things that probably Dom could not stop talking about. And most everybody else just needs to know that what we're really talking about is, is how your attendance and the number of students enrolled in your district is tied to aid. And that's really what, what you'd need to pay attention to in that respect. So how do we develop our BOSIS or our, our budget at BOSIS? All the directors meet with program administrators, and those budgets are developed based on initial requests. Then superintendent's cabinet takes a look at it, and then Colleen and I take, meet with all of the cabinet members, take a look and drill down into those budgets necessary. And then the cabinet superintendent's cabinet reviews this, you know, the summary of all the budget increases. So ironically, and, and I think you'll all appreciate this. About three or four months ago, this felt horrible, and we felt like we were probably facing the toughest budget situation that I can remember since about two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when we had the recession that led to the gap elimination adjustment and all of the things that went along with that. And so because of how the budget cycle goes, BOSIS had to develop their budget earlier than districts had to develop their budget because we have to be able to tell the districts what it is we're, we're going to be asking from them so that you can build that into your budgets. So our budget is tight. It is lean, and we did everything we could to keep things as close to zero as possible. You'll see that as we move through these next few slides. And lo and behold, you know, we, we were all a bit rescued and, and, and the picture isn't, is, is dim. So you take a look at the five-year ARWADA snapshot for the whole region, and you'll see that, you know, North Syracuse being the biggest district, not surprising in, in this upstate region where most folks are having some level of declining enrollment that North Syracuse, you know, has a, has dropped about two hundred and thirty-four students from the previous year. And so that impacts ARWADA. So this is our overall throughout the whole OCMBOSIS region, ARWADA, and you can see it has dropped significantly since, since the early aughts. And so that's a trend that is obviously bothersome and somewhat worrisome for the region, but it's also something that we have to deal with, and then we adjust our programs accordingly. So our, this is our year-to-year increase from the proposed budget to the adopted budget and what the changes look like. I, I'm not going to go through every line of it, but I will point out that the significant factor is retiree health insurance. And so probably the best way that I could explain that to you now is that in order for you to have to vote on the budget, the, the retiree health insurance is included in the administrative budget, but that's not actually how we bill it. What we then do is we take that and we spread that out across a variety, all of our different programs. And so that increase is not something that you're specifically voting on tonight. That increase gets, gets, the weight of that gets carried throughout the, the whole region. And one of the things that you should be aware of too is that it's not just our twenty-three component districts, but because we have the RIC, it gets also spread across the fifty districts to some extent that have to do with, with the RIC as well. So we do everything we can to keep the costs low for our, for our component districts. Little bit more detail. The retiree health insurance is obviously the biggest piece of the increase in the budget. If you take out the retiree health insurance, all other categories, we actually decreased our year-to-year budget, which wound up with an overall three-point-four percent budget-to-budget increase. So when I said we kept things tight, other than the factor that the, the one piece that we can't control at all, which is the same one you can't control at all, the retiree health insurance, we were able to keep our budget with an actual reduction year-to-year. So overall, North Syracuse, when you take that and combine that with the ARWADA, you're seeing a dollar-to-dollar change of a reduction of nine thousand dollars in what you paid last year when you think about the administrative budget and, you know, the total ask from North Syracuse, so. It's, it actually went down. So there's other components to the, to the budget. There's a capital budget, and there's rental budgets that are tucked into the administrative budget as well. Not going to go through all the specific numbers on those. You should know, though, that the capital work that we do is really work that either we have to do for student improvement or we have to do things that enhance our, our, our facilities the same way everybody else does. And the, we will be starting on a, an elevator at main campus, and that has to do with accessibility. So in the same way that school districts have to pay attention to codes and accessibility and things like that, we, we do as well. So when you take all of those, the three components of that, together, the administrative rental and capital budgets, we're talking about a total increase of a one-point-two-one budget increase, and the share to North Syracuse is, again, a reduction of seventy-five hundred bucks a quarter from year to year. So I'm going to turn this over to Colleen, who will, who will walk you through the program part of the budget.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you. So I think I always get, I get to do the fun part, which is talking about the programs that benefit your students. So just quickly, I, you know, Matt covered budget very well, so I'm not going to say much here except to say that each of our programs do have to support themselves individually. It's the way BOSIS budgeting works. So our goal was to have a minimal unit cost increase, and each budget had to be self-supporting. Each district gets to choose what services that they participate in. So North Syracuse can choose to participate in several or not, and you're billed simply for obviously what you use. So we, we based our budgets on initial requests. Final request just came in April fifteenth, so we're now going back through the numbers, but expect our budgets to stay consistent. So what factors impact our budgets, the same things that impact yours? So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. It's obviously the salaries, the health insurance, the TRS, ERS, changes in service requests. Why might some of our budgets decrease? Well, if we have increased participation in a particular service and we don't have to hire additional staff, we can decrease the cost of a service for everybody, so we try and do that when we can. And just like you, when you have retirements or reductions in staff, we look very closely to see, is there a creative way to meet this need that will not negatively impact our programs? And then also looking at reduction in everything from equipment to supplies, field trips, travel, et cetera. So just a few of the highlights that we wanted to share with you about our BOSIS, your BOSIS. We were able to pivot to remote learning, just like you did in March, and support over two thousand of our students in special ed, career, and technical education, and innovative education to remote learning. And even with the challenges of last year, ninety-seven percent of our career and technical education students graduated. And while our graduation ceremonies were more personalized and very small, and I was a little skeptical about how they, how it'd be received, they really were wonderful, and we got a lot of very positive feedback from families about that. We feel really fortunate. Our class sizes are smaller to begin with in many cases between our special education programs and innovative education programs. And also in CTE, we were able to start in person five days a week in September, so very proud of that, and it's, it's really gone tremendously well. And your district has been great in transporting the North Syracuse students all along to us five days a week. We launched a new heavy equipment repair and diesel technology program, which I think is pretty exciting, at Tracy Road Equipment. We have shifted to more of an embedded model, trying to offer career and tech ed programs in businesses where they have access to the equipment that businesses use, and so if you've never been to Tracy Road, there's hundreds of millions of dollars of trucks and equipment that our students now have access to, as long as the opportu, as well as the opportunity to work side-by-side the employees. So that's been a wonderful launch this year, and we were even able to do it with COVID, following COVID protocols. Lockheed Martin, you may recall, we opened a new vision engineering professions program there. It's in its second year. We were not as fortunate to be able to stay in Lockheed Martin because of their safety protocols, but they did align their engineers and partner with our students virtually so they could still do internships remotely, which has been an amazing experience, but we are looking forward to getting back there in September. So just to give you an example, as, as I mentioned, the, the program budgets have to operate independent of each other. So you can see here, we, we worked really diligently to keep these budgets flat. Some zero percent, some one percent, one-point-five percent tuition increases. So just going to focus on a couple other areas of the BOSIS, so the management services. So we help submit the Affordable Care Act paperwork, if you will, to help thirty-three school districts remain compliant. And while that might not sound particularly exciting, it frees up people's time to do more, I don't want to say more important work, but other work. So glad we're able to help in that regard. Food service was such a challenge this year, obviously, with the pandemic, and our staff was right in there helping to deliver lunches and breakfasts to all of our students in the region. And I think this is probably one of the most impressive figures is cooperative purchasing. So whether we're buying soccer balls or hot dog buns or bigger equipment, collectively, we've saved almost two-point-seven million dollars for districts during the twenty-nineteen calendar year that can go towards students. We have a labor relations service, which has, I think, been given some great feedback, especially with our new Dominic DeImperio, who's our new labor relations specialist, who's joined the team and is doing a great job, along with Dave Mestre. And they're a wonderful resource for our districts. And to take a look, you can see, as Matt mentioned earlier, we just, we kind of took everything out that we possibly could, and then maybe a little bit more, because we were anticipating horrible budgets. So that's why you'll see these all at zero percent increases. Professional development, our instructional support services and regional information center provides valuable services. I will say it was unique this year because our teachers, our staff, and I'm sure everyone here can attest to the work that it took all around the table, trying to help teachers and everyone get ready to teach remotely. And at the RIC and ISS, we've provided a lot of professional development workshops in March, April, May, June, and the summer, trying to support teachers with this learning. So we, in the first month, we created seventy-six online workshops and reached over a, almost fifteen hundred educators who participated in those trainings. We were able to have a virtual summer school, and you can look at the numbers here, and I think considering how quickly we pivoted, the feedback was really very, very positive. Our Aspiring Leaders Institute has successfully launched, and we're happy to have folks from our region considering going into leadership. We need high-quality leaders right now, and this program is helping to develop that. We have a teacher immersion program that's also been a great program to help increase and promote teachers in our region. So they are attending college and have the opportunity to do substitute teaching for us. And then the hope is that we might be able to build some strong relationships and maybe able to hire them at some point in time when they conclude their certification. As you can see, there's kind of a theme, lots of zeros and zero percent increases. And then, I mean, the Zoom, I don't even know what to say. I mean, what, I'm kind of speechless. Zoom fatigue, Zoom. We, we can't live without it, and it's also, and, and we have, we've all experienced the highs and the lows of Zoom. So we really did help our region get Zoom accounts off the ground. And you can see that we had sixty accounts when, before the pandemic hit, and, and then launched to over seven thousand. And from September to December alone, districts conducted a hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-four-hundred-eleven meetings on Zoom with over, that, that can't be right.
A lot.
Over a lot. So model schools also, this is just, you can see the theme, right? It's about how do you create engaging instruction for students online to try and keep them engaged? And that's, that's what our instructional technology specialist helped do, and they had office hours, they did coaching, really did whatever they, they could to support our teachers in the region. Data privacy and security, we know how important this is. It's a major focus in every district across the region. And we started a service that brings together the DPOs across the, the data protection officers across the region to make sure that we're doing everything we can to keep, keep our districts safe and our students' information. Also, you can see the amount of technology that was actually purchased, the devices during the nineteen-twenty year. And then also, all the signs that districts had to create to help keep students safe and know where to walk, reminding them to wash their hands. We printed several of those for many districts across the region, as well as the little daily check-in sheets with students, temperature checking and such. So you can see here also just a sampling of some of our budgets from the regional information center. So you know the final request date has come and gone, and today is the big April nineteenth date for voting on the Ministry of Budgets. And that concludes our presentation. We do have a video that we can use to share.
Destiny Sherman, Portland Enlarged City School District, Most Improved Student Award.
Trayvon Holton from Liverpool Culinary Arts, CTE.
I live out in Fenner, so there's diesel tractors going down the road, and just everything around there is diesel. And then, just like I knew about Tracy Road, and I've been driving past here for my whole life. And then I saw it, and I was like, the program's opening up. So it's been a lot of fun.
Certainly, there's a shortage of employees, especially mechanics and body technicians. You know, to find somebody that's a good diesel mechanic, a good heavy diesel mechanic, is very hard to find. So having a course where you can teach somebody and then possibly hire them later on down the road would be a big advantage for us.
See, BOSI's is like my happy place. If I'm having a horrible day, I come here and I'm leaving, I'm fine.
So definitely like the environment here, like the people. At first, it'll be kind of weird because they're all from different schools, but within a week, you'll be making tons of friends. And a lot of the projects we do, we have to work together. So that's nice. And it's just nice to get out and do stuff. It's all fun here, so.
I really like BOSI's because it really gives everyone the opportunity to learn skills that can help them throughout their entire life while still in high school.
So one other thing I would just like to say, on behalf of OSAM BOSI's, Matt and I, North Syracuse is an amazing partner. You're an amazing partner, and you're always looking out for what's best for your students. And Dan has been wonderful to work with and the entire administrative team. And we put our heads together to help solve problems and try and create more opportunities for students. So thank you all for your support and for your partnership.
Take any questions if there are any?
Well, I just have a comment, I suppose it's no question in there. But I mean, I was lucky enough pre-pandemic to take a tour with Mike and Bob and see some of these programs, not the ones that weren't there. But look forward to the opportunity to do that again, and I especially look forward to the opportunity, hopefully, to have the meeting where we have the service from the culinary students, many of which are ours, which that was phenomenal last year. So I look forward to the ability to do that again, and I thank you.
Just want to make one comment, and I want to thank Matt and Colleen for their leadership and guidance throughout this year. You've been the conduit between us and the Department of Health. And when there's been changes, you've assisted us in navigating the waters. And you've really done a phenomenal job adjusting and working with all the districts to help us be successful in all this. So I want to thank both of you. Truly been partners.
Appreciate that. I'm not sure what changes you're talking about, though. Everything's just been the same, right?
Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you very much. Yep. My computer's not moving. Okay, next we have a presentation from Dr. Leahy. It's North Syracuse, a community committed to our students.
Okay, there we go. So first, thanks for the privilege of having me here tonight to speak about our students and some of the initiatives we have moving forward. Today's kind of a momentous day for us as a district. Last Monday, we brought back our K-4 students, five days a week. Today, we very successfully brought back our secondary students, five through 12, four days a week. We're really, really excited to have all of our students who want to be here, either four days a week, five through 12, or five days a week, K through four, in our buildings. And I think that's probably, I would speak for Dan and all of us in cabinet, getting out in the buildings the last few weeks. It's wonderful to see classrooms with students in there. It's wonderful to see the kids excited to be back with their peers. It's a really, really exciting time. We thought it might be a good time for an update to the board with some of the initiatives that we're working through, as well as some of the challenges. So the first thing is this year, as Matt kind of alluded to, it's been a year of transitions for everybody, not just on the policy or being an administrator, but it's been a year of transitions for our students. Currently, we have about 65% of our students in the district who are getting in-person instruction. We still have about 35% district-wide remote. You'd find that number's higher in CNS in the junior high, and then much lower in some of our buildings, such as Cisaral, it's about 88% in person. There's been several shifts this year. First, we started the year out in September with our K-4 students. They attended school two out of five days a week, and we shifted them back to five days on April 12th last Monday. Our five through seven students shifted from two to four days a week today. And one of the things that's really interesting is their eight through 12 students have actually had the most transition. They started the school year with one day per week. They shifted to two days per week on March 1st, once we had the available space based on social distancing guidelines. And then they've shifted from two to four days today, April 19th. And I could say, as a parent of both a seventh grader and a 10th grader, I'm thrilled. It's good to see them back in school, and they're excited, and they've had just wonderful days back with their peers, with their teachers. It's great to see them away from the computers. And again, and also acknowledging that not only have our students shifted from instructional model at one point in the year because of our positivity rates in the county and concerns we had within the district, all of our students shifted remote for a few weeks. So it's been a year of transition, and I don't think I can understate the impact it's had on our staff, our students, our community. There's been lots of concerns, not just here in North Syracuse, but throughout the county, throughout the nation. And I wanted to share a few things about that. So we know to work and move forward, to work with our students, to support our students, there's really three parts of this. The first is the social-emotional. You've seen the most recent budget, we've supported it. We're building an infrastructure to have a fully viable social-emotional program in the district. And one of the byproducts of COVID is it's really accelerated that process. It's pushed us further along than perhaps we might have been without it. But just a survey that was administered right around the time of COVID, the first full month after students were out of school, and it's very concerning. It says, you know, students were much more than usual to say that they were depressed, and almost 51% said they felt a lot more uncertainty about the future as well. And I will say, from an administrative perspective who works with COVID regularly, there's so many things for kids to look forward to. I spent quite a bit of time with the High School Musical today. That's going to be running this week to make sure that they're all set to go with our sports up and running, with more students in class. I think that we're starting to make some traction about that uncertainty. There's going to be a prom, there's going to be a ball, there's going to be all those things that we want our kids to participate in. You know, will it be the same as before? No. But are we moving forward? Is the future looking more certain for our students? I would say if we asked those same students that question today, I think there would be a better response. I'm confident that we're moving forward, and our kids are excited about it. And there's a lot of great things on the horizon. Academically, starting this school year, at the beginning of this school year, Brown University reported that about 60% of the learning gains in reading and 44% of the learning gains in math relative for a typical school year weren't there. Our kids started the year out without the gains they usually make, simply because of the disrupted environment, you know, last year. And the third part of this is the health and safety. We know that if we do this well, if we're responsive, that we can keep our school safe, we can manage COVID, we can make sure our students have access, that our community has confidence. So these are the three items that I wanted to explore a little bit more today with you. They all work interdependently. We can't have social-emotional learning without safe schools. We can't have academic learning without social-emotional learning or confidence of the community to send their child to school. And we've seen an uptick over the last few weeks with more and more parents saying, I'm ready to send my child back to school. And that's a huge vote of confidence for our district, and we're excited about that. So the first one here is the social-emotional learning. Lisa Goldberg has done a wonderful job, and her and Dan together, I really believe are building a great infrastructure for social-emotional learning within the district. Throughout the year, we've surveyed staff, parents, and students, grades eight through 12, about their needs, listening, what do you need? Are you feeling alienated or feeling alone? Do we need additional counseling or support? We knew as we were bringing students back, we did not want students to come back to school who haven't been in school for over a year and have a first day of school while going into classes with their peers who've been in school for some amount of time. So all of our building principals developed some form of orientation structure for reentry, whether it be students coming in on Wednesday, students coming in in the evenings or after school, to get reoriented with school. It's a very unique entry some students had today, as I was at the junior high, where you have a group of students who were coming in. a group of students who were coming for the first half of the week, a group of students coming from the second half of the week, and some students who had not been here in a year. And you're bringing all those students together, very atypical. It's not like the first day of school where everybody's new to each other. But you have these different cohorts that you're bringing together in support of that process and knowing that that was going to be our biggest challenge was building a sense of community in April. That's something we usually work through in September and throughout the year, but to initiate a new sense of community in April, Lisa Goldberg did a wonderful job finding the best research practices about building community in our schools and using those the first few days back. Let's slow down with academics. Let's build relationships with students, among students, and build a sense of classroom community. We've also done Wellness Wednesdays throughout the pandemic where every Wednesday we had activities and themes posted. This last week's Wellness Wednesday was about embracing change. Change is going to come. It's the way we react to it that makes all the difference. So there's always a theme there for parents to work through with their students, for teachers to work through. And the idea of acknowledging, we need to have something on the calendar every week during this very critical time about wellness and taking care of each other. The other part is implementation of biomass and second step programs. As you all know, biomass is a behavior intervention management assessment system. It allows us to look at, ask kids some real probing questions about how they're feeling about school, where they are personally. So we can support them before there's a critical incident. And then we also look at second step programs and that's a wonderful program about really acknowledging all of the wellbeing in the classroom, the teachers, the students. It's also about building a sense of cohesiveness and caringness within a classroom environment. Many of our elementary schools are using this and to some degree in the middle schools. And the last part is, is parents need support too. It's not an easy time to be a parent. And again, giving Lisa all the credit that she deserves. She's worked with contact community services and providing parent community support on anxiety. And there's a lot of anxiety for students as they make this transition back. And I think we all feel good about the transition. It's been, it's been a solid one. It's been fairly smooth. And for a lot of students, my guess is they're going to feel better tonight. They're going to go home without that anxiety of the first day of school and probably true for our teachers and our staff members as well. The second part of this though is acknowledging, yes, there has been some learning loss. And we want to look at our students closely. We're going to be screening our students in the spring and really assessing what their needs are, identifying those and starting to get ready for interventions both throughout this year as well as in the fall. We're looking at our class size. One of the benefits of this new budget that we, that you've all supported is our class size for K through four buildings is around 20 on average. It's a very, very good class size. It's going to allow us to do some unique things with accelerating groupings and looking at where kids are and how do we compose or make a composition of a class of students that will best support the different learners we have. And for those who have struggled throughout COVID as well as those who have accelerated. The other thing that we're working on now and we're exploring this now is something we've never done in this district as far as I know, and Bob might be able to correct me, but a K through six summer learning program where we really look at those students who are struggling and saying, hey, can we get more time with them in the summer in July or possibly part of August? We've solicited some input today from our K six teachers about interest. And we really like to support a program in the summer for those students and focusing on ELA in math and SCL. Supporting it with classroom teachers, perhaps teaching assistants where needed, if they are needed. There's a need there as well as a counselor or a social worker to build some time in each day to work on social skills and such. The other things we're going to continue, of course, with our partners at BOSIS, our seven through 12 regional summer school for those students. And we also are going to up our efforts with CNS, North Syracuse Junior High, excuse me, the credit recovery program for grades nine through 12. So for some students who may have really struggled in, let's say a chemistry class, and they've done well overall, we want to get them right on our campus in CNS and working directly with some of our science teachers in the summer and recovering those credits. We want kids to move forward. We know that's going to be a concern. Students transitioning from one grade to the next as well as students earning those high school diplomas. We want to make sure that people have an opportunity to move forward as much as possible. So we're acknowledging that there's going to be more of a need for credit recovery. And one of the things that Jamie Sullivan's done, which credit to her and her staff at CNS, they looked at numbers early on in November and December and they were very concerned about students who were seniors but who didn't seem to be making progress in their studies to graduate on time. And so they developed a really wonderful idea with our Wednesdays is walk across Wednesdays. They called all the parents of those students. They held after school meetings with them and said, we want your child to graduate. We want to see them reach that stage and move forward. But we know that they're going to need a little more coaching. They're going to need a little support and structure that maybe they're not getting. So we want them to come in on Wednesdays and work with us for a few hours and our teachers and the teachers at CNS all stepped up, happy to help out. Jamie put it together and they've done a wonderful job up at CNS to really get these kids focused, motivated, give them the structure they need, some time directly with teachers in person to move forward towards graduation. So with the academics, we're confident that we're going to be moving forward and addressing those needs as we move forward. And the third one, and it is important, is managing COVID. As we all know, we're doing, we're making progress. It's been a really, really tough challenge for us. And there's the procedural things we're required to do like temp-taking, daily screening, continuous COVID monitoring. But there's the other part of, it's a daily part of our routines now. COVID is not something we schedule and we do it on Friday afternoon or Wednesday morning. It's something we do by the hour daily. And what I mean by that is we do daily reporting. Every day we upload to the New York State Report Card. Weekly reporting goes to you, the Board of Education. We look at our numbers regularly. We do asymptomatic school-based testing. We're scheduling our third round now. We're in the process of doing that. So now that we have more students back, we want to do another round of asymptomatic testing on all of our schools just to see, hey, are there students that we need to identify that might be positive? And as we all know, one of the challenges for a lot of students is they're asymptomatic. So we want to make sure that we keep an eye on those numbers. And probably the other thing that's one of the most important bulleted items up here is the weekly conferences with nurses. When we started the school year, we knew our nurses were going to be critical players in this battle to keep our school safe and free of COVID as much as possible. And so we meet every Wednesday morning at 9:30. We update the nurses if there's guidances come out, we take their questions, we help problem solve with them. We've done that every Wednesday since the very first week of the school year. And it's been extremely helpful for me as an administrator, for all of us to listen to their concerns and the challenges, but also to develop that relationship with them. So they always feel that they're empowered to make decisions. They know exactly what they need to know in terms of new guidance. And we work as a team. The picture here on the inset on the bottom left there, there's our trainers and our nurses helping out with the asymptomatic, the athletic testing for high-risk sports. And they're happy to support us in any way. And our nurses have gone above and beyond to be just very thoughtful. And they challenge us a lot to say, hey, what about this? Have you thought about that? What's the procedure for X, Y, or Z? And they have great questions. And we've developed a really good working relationship as a team with our nurses. And the other part of this is the collaborative relationship with Andover County Department of Health and New York State Department of Health. There are two go-to people we work with, Stephanie Waldron and Lee Stollen. And there's not a day that goes by, we don't interact multiple times. But what's wonderful is if our nurses have a question about a student, they can directly contact me and I'll get them and they'll give us a response usually within 30 minutes. And they ask the same. If they have a question about a positive case in the district, they get me, I get back to them immediately. But they've almost become part of our daily routine of working together. And the second half of those bullets, it's really about process and teamwork and it's not just about procedures. It's about, it's about the way you approach this work and we're really proud of the work we've done. And I think when, when the dust all settles, we'll look back and say, yeah, we worked together as a team. We supported each other. And everybody was part of this process. So those three items together are the three areas that I see us making the most progress in. Those are areas of focus for us. And the students, again, seeing them back in the classrooms, seeing our community fully support this transition back and the confidence that they have in us and what we have in each other has been a really great way to turn the corner on this pandemic. So I just wanted to share that information with you and update you on some of those initiatives. And of course, if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments?
I just have some comments. Thank you for this presentation. I'm just so happy to see all the ideas and things you are putting together to help our students get back on track, the ideas for summer school. How are we going to finance that? So I mean, was that part of our budget?
Going to let Donna ask that into that one because we spent a lot of time with that.
We bring our staff back in the summer, we have to pay them.
Do you want to speak to that, Don?
Sure. Yeah, we, we actually included in our budget additional funds for the K six program that Chris described for the additional credit recovery as well as obviously our participation in the BOSIS program going forward. And you know, these were things on our list that until we got that final state aid number, we weren't sure how they were going to fall. But once we got the additional state aid, they got in the budget.
Great. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Leahy. And Mr. Keegan, we have a smart schools presentation. I can see you're already on the way up. So when you are ready.
Well, good evening. I have a very brief, brief presentation on smart schools. And the reason it's brief is that this is a topic although we haven't talked about in a while, it's one that that the board has seen a presentation on this several times as we've gone through each of our plans. So bear with me a second as I. So I'm going to talk just a quick refresher on smart schools and then tell you what we have in mind for this next plan. So I've got 13 slides here, but I'm going to move through them like I said quickly. So it's hard to believe, but in the general election of 2014, smart schools was approved. It's been six years. North Syracuse was blessed to get $6.2 million of money available. And I think we've done a good job with the funds. One of the things that has been nice is that, you know, we didn't, we didn't spend it all at one time. We spent it kind of responsibly over the last several years. We have a little bit of money left and that's what I want to talk to you about tonight. To just refresh your memory on what we were supposed to do with the smart schools Bond Act money, we were to install high-speed broadband wireless and interconnectivity, acquire learning technology and equipment includes all the things listed here. And construct and enhance and modernize educational facilities to accommodate pre-K programs. People might say, well, what did we do for pre-K programs? Well, we rewired Main Street for wireless and installed the whole wireless network there. So that was awesome. Isn't that, isn't that seem, I know, it seems crazy, but believe it or not, you can't have wireless and you have really good wires. So we did that. And then obviously high-tech security features, we've done that in our buildings as well. We shared funds appropriately with our non-public schools as well so that they were able to participate in this and we worked with them to buy technology for them. Important to note, smart schools Bond Act has no impact on the property tax cap, any of these expenditures. They're not part of the general fund budget. And it's not, not a factor there. I want to just kudos to our technology committee, to our tech team, the IT department and our tech coaches. They have just done an amazing job pre-pandemic, working together to identify the needs of the district and helping us take this to the next level and really upgrade the technology across the district. As a result of their hard work, when the pandemic hit, I really felt North Syracuse was well positioned to deal with the surge and the need to get to one-to-one technology and to be able to support our students. It wasn't perfect. You know, it was certainly stressful for everybody involved, but the groundwork that the tech committee, tech coaches and IT department did in advance of the pandemic really helped out largely funded by smart schools money. I won't take you through the missions and goals of the technology committee. You've seen that information before. But just to recap what we did, these are some of the things we did with our previous investment plans. A lot of Chromebooks and carts and critical technology for important programs like Project Lead the Way and our graphic arts programs. We've, you know, continued to install, you know, large instruction projectors and network access points and switches and routers to make the wireless all work. And, and we continue to evaluate our paging systems and make improvements throughout the district. Smart Schools Investment Plan two was the big wiring for wireless project. Three was, you know, more network devices and Chromebooks deployed. And, and four was, you know, Chromebooks, desktops and interactive boards and projectors. And again, we continue to do that. And we, we did meet the standard for 100 megabits per thousand students. That standard that was required, we got that by 2016. So what do we want to do now? So I want to explain, like you might say, well, why do we still have money left? Well, two things happened. One is we saved some of the money and didn't spend it all at one time. The other thing that happened was we would get these plans approved and we'd get quotes for or bid the work. And what would happen is the actual prices came in less, less. So we would, we were kind of scooping up this money that instead of spending $200 for a Chromebook, we bought it for 175. And you do that over and over again and you, you build up a little bit of money. One of the things that I, again, maybe as long-term board members, you guys will appreciate, our smart boards are old. It seems like that's new technology, but those smart boards were all in place. We were installing them, I guess, when I got here in 2012. But, but it's 2021 and it's time to, you know, upgrade and replace. And so one of the things we're going to do with this next round of smart schools money is really focus on these Vionic boards and and you'll remember, these boards are not projection type boards. These are like really nice TV sets, you know, different sizes as are indicated here on the slide. And we, it was nice, we were able to pilot these. We went to the people that got the first smart boards and we put in some Vionic boards and, and we've, we've determined this is pretty good technology. And so we want to make our next big purchase of these. And that's what we're doing with Smart Schools Investment Plan five. And we hope that, we hope that the community is supportive of this. So the process is, I've presented this to you tonight, our plans for that roughly $211,000. We're going to share this with the community, post it on our website. And then we'll hold a public hearing and the public hearing basically is at one of the board meetings. We'll just ask if anybody had any questions on the plan. If not, the board will adopt it and we'll submit that plan to New York State. And we don't anticipate any problems with approval. But that's the process is that we have to ask for approval of the plan. Once we get it, we'll go ahead and make that purchase and hopefully have these boards ready for the 21, 22 school year. And that's all I have. Any questions or concerns about Smart Schools Investment Plan?
I just remember Michael was a college student, he put in those whiteboards.
I know. Yeah, yeah. It's hard to believe, time flies, but, but it really flies with technology. And, and so we, those smart boards have been awesome, but it's, it's time to upgrade. If there's no other questions, thank you.
I just have a question.
Mary, go ahead.
So the new boards will replace all the smart boards?
Yeah, over time, over time, we're going to, we're going to move through carefully. But as you can see from this plan, you know, we're talking about buying quite a few, you know, almost 100 of them. And so we have, we have a lot. We've already purchased some. We're nursing along our smart boards pretty effectively. One of the things that's very interesting is with one-to-one technology, you know, we want to give our teachers an opportunity to weigh in in this whole process and see how they think about that main screen in the classroom. You know, what do they want that to be now that every child has a screen on their desk? And so more work for our technology committee, we certainly need to buy these. But we're going to be working to think about what does classroom technology look like once everybody's back and once everybody still has one-to-one technology. So I think we're going to, I think we're open to a lot of possibilities here. But we need to at least make this investment of 100.
And included in this will be the training for the teachers to utilize?
Yeah. Yes, of course. The technology training is just ongoing. We just need to keep doing that. And many of our teachers are pretty proficient on this technology already. Those that aren't, of course, will, will provide training.
Will this be the end of funding in the bond?
The smart schools Bond Act money? No, we have some, we have additional funds. And we, we will be using that to continue to buy Chromebooks. That's another one that people, it's a hard thing for me to even realize that our oldest Chromebooks are five years old. Chromebook has a five-year life. And so we are about to make a big investment in additional Chromebooks and we'll use some smart schools money for that. Kind of that extra money I told you about that we're scooping up as we were saving it to do that.
Do all the buildings have Wi-Fi?
Oh, yes. Yeah. And what I think what's good, Mary, you know, if you asked me that question a number of years ago, I would have said, yes, we have Wi-Fi. It's great. But as Mike can tell you, as others that know, our buildings can tell you, we had spots like dead zones. It didn't work here. It didn't work there. With the rewiring that we've done and the additional work we've done, the switch over to the Meraki Wi-Fi, I think we've plugged, you know, most of the holes. I'm not, if we're aware of any, they'll be plugged as, you know, extremely fast if there, if anybody brought any to our attention. So yeah, the Wi-Fi seems to be working pretty good and seems pretty reliable.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have comments from the audience where we have no speaker signed up for today. I'm going to move right along to Board of Education Committee reports. I don't believe you have a report, Mr. Crabtree, but did you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to tell my committee that we will be meeting. Microphones, we will be meeting next Wednesday at six o'clock. One of our members of our committee is Dr. Cook comes to our meetings. But one thing I know Paul, you've mentioned is that our Assemblymen and Senators or their aides have been coming. And I want to thank Dan for his letter that went out the other day with where you can go and thank them. I think this would be a great idea if some of the board members would go in and thank our legislators for what they did. So just go look at Dan's letter that he sent to the community, was to the community last week. And there's, you know, go in and just thank them. I would, I would personally appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Scanlon, Policy Committee.
Yes, our Policy Committee, we met on April thirteenth via Zoom. We had eight policies that were reviewed. And all eight are on our board agenda tonight. Six are for to readopt without change and two we are recommending to amend and readopt. And our next meeting is May eleventh.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Crabtree, would you like to make comments on the OCM BOSI's report?
Please, you know, send me an email or let me know. But I want to thank those people that attended the virtual annual meeting. Each of you got a one of these through email by Connie, and you also received the two hundred twenty annual report through Connie. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask me. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Superintendent's comments, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you. I want to thank again all the elementary people last week. Our elementary students came back five days a week, and it really went very smoothly. From the teachers, teaching assistants, I can continue to name the bus drivers, the custodian. We had a great week last week, and today was the start of the secondary. And I went to all four secondary buildings. I started CNS, went over to Gillette, got to the junior high midday, finished up at Rocks. And the kids are smiling. There's that buzz again. And it felt like the first day of school and kids were, I mean, fist pumping each other, and it was just a sight to see. I think there's going to be a lot of tired teachers and administrators just trying to do the things to make sure it's successful. And I had a meeting this afternoon with the counselors. And the counselors offices were busy with kids coming in about schedules and the systems that were in place to support students were all there. So again, I want to thank everyone because I think that really set the tone and that we're going to have students that are excited about being back. Some numbers I received from the high school, we had two hundred twenty students that were remote came back to in person. Junior High had about a hundred and sixty students that were remote came back. Gillette had seventy remote came back to full in person and Rocks had seventy one. So again, those are the things that helped with today. I do want to comment on, it's been a tough season, but we're just starting with baseball, softball. Looked out where we've had some difficulties with fields and being saturated. The maintenance crew has done a phenomenal job, and I spoke with Mr. Rockwell and Mrs. Beebe today. And they're excited about the the shape of the fields and playing. Just a reminder, the state has said three for eight testing will be starting this week. So we do have two, two buildings that will be starting on Thursday, but the rest will be happening this Friday. And the last thing I have is heard it on the news, I think it was in the in the paper. And Bob, you had commented on another student at one time. So I wanted to make a point. We had a student, Maddie Alcock. Sixteen years old in the paper saves the life of a six month old student. The infant had a heart condition that was undetected, ended up not breathing when the mom went out. She had taken CPR and revived the student, and it was because of her efforts really saved this child's life. And I just want to say it publicly, and she's very responsible and really did a wonderful thing, and she's one of ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Any Board of Education comments for the good of the order?
I do.
Yes.
We've been doing meetings now with the high school, the junior high, social workers and the canteen. And the collaboration that Dan has put together with all of those administrative and principals, counselors, everyone, they're all working together with the students to get the care and the social emotional learning and the the support that is needed. And it's going very well.
Thank you. Other comments? Just checking. All right. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to routine action items, and I'll look for a motion for consideration approval over the following minutes, the minutes of the April fifth, two thousand twenty one board meeting, the special board meetings of April twelfth and April fourteenth. Motion for Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Krueger, yes. Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. If I get a motion for B and C, a motion from the Scanlon, second from Mr. Marizio, B is a consideration of classification of the school placement of disabled students by the District Committee on Special Ed, and C is a classification for the preschool students. That's before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed. Thank you. That is carried. Motion for de acknowledgement of business office reports from March two thousand twenty one. Motion for Mrs. Kruger, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. Discussion action items. We've seen BOSI's budget tonight. So if I get a motion to place that before us, motion for Mr. Crabtree, second from I'm I'm making, I wanted you to make that. I knew you'd want that. Second from Mrs. Scanlon. Any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, all in favor. Pose and that is carried. Any motion, please, for the election of the Andog Cortland Madison BOSI's board members?
Somebody else can do it.
Motion for Mr. Thorne, second for Mrs. Scanlon. Any discussion there?
I'd just like to say, I know that each of you got the annual meeting, but I'd just like to go through the candidates so that you know a little bit about them. Wayne Bronson, who's the president of, president now of the OCM BOSI's. He's been a member since nineteen eighty seven. So he's the elder of our group, and he represents ESM. Marissa Mims newly just came within the last five months. She is president presently of the FM School Board, and she represents FM and JD. Luke Marinus, he's Vice President of the Homer School District, and he represents Homer and Cortland. And the last one you'll be voting on is Sean Rayburn. He's President of the Lafayette School Board. And he gets to represent Lafayette, Tully and Fabius Pompey. So those are the four candidates that you will be voting on. And just to let you know, your vote on A and B, Connie will be sending over to BOSI's. It has to be done by the end of today, April nineteenth.
Okay, any other comments? Seeing none. Thank you. All in favor. Pose those that is carried. Motion, please, for the acknowledgement of the gifts in item C. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Posed and is carried. I'd like to get a motion to put D, E and F together, motion for Mrs. Scanlon, second from Mr. Thorne. Those are the policies. Mary described those earlier. We have six for readoption, two for amendment. Any discussion there before us? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose, those are carried. Thank you. The acknowledgement for retirements. We have Kathy Delia, Custodial Worker Two, retiring with twenty years of service. Michelle Marquardt, Cook Manager, retiring with twenty years of service. And Alice Trudeau, Motor Equipment Operator, retiring with twenty seven point six years of service. So thank you to those. Thank you very much. Personnel report, if I could get a motion to put personnel report A before us, motion for Mrs. Scanlon, second for Mr. Marizio. Any discussion? Sure.
Being a former employee, Kathy, that will be leaving after twenty years custodian. I met her as a teacher at Cicero when I was going through a difficult time in my life, personal. And she would spend half hour, forty five minutes in my classroom every night talking to me. She had a tragedy in her life. And I know she's worked at Allen Road, and she's worked at other schools, and I wish her the best of luck. She was, you know, custodians, you think just clean your room, but they don't. They talk to you if you stay after school and will help you and so forth. So I wish her the best of luck.
Thank you. An instructional personnel report A is before us. I believe I had a motion as second, correct? Any discussion on that? All in favor. Post carried instructional, I mean, support staff report B, please, a motion to place it before us, motion for Mr. Thorne, second for Mrs. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried. I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing the employment record of three individuals and no action to follow. If I could get a second, second from Mrs. Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose that is carried and please a motion for adjournment, motion for Mr. Marizio, second for Mrs. Scanlon. Any discussion on adjournment? Seeing none, all in favor. Pose. Thank you. We are adjourned.